I counsel members, executive sessions is discussing attraction out of like department. And I want to take an executive session. I'll call for motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
That's right. Here, I'll let you play your right hand. Six zero. First meeting is now. Now, a little after five thirty. And I will call the Lawrence County Committee as a whole to order to, you know, petition by Vice Chairman Carroll. All about what allegiance of those that are able, please.
That's right. Hello, would you thank for the beauty of this day that we had. Well, we asked it as we discussed these many, many important things for the citizens of Lawrence County that you're with us in these discussions and the things we do are pleasing in your side. Lord, give us guidance that we do the things that we should do to prove Lawrence County for. Or as we deliberate tonight, may we be with a respectful heart and tongue. In the name of God. What allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the religion of which is in this. One nation under God, indivisible, but that is given justice for all.
All right, good evening. Appreciate y'all coming out. Do this quickly. While last time, but just like the last time, first real quick, we come and go as you monitor our feelings whatsoever. Let's flat out once you were done, that'll be no problem. And Ms. Clark is pulling the end. We are going to give her a few minutes to get here, so she's here for the entirety of the process. And I will go ahead and call for a motion to approve the agenda of it later. Ms. Anderson.
Second.
Second, Mr. Carroll. Are there any additions or additions to the agenda? And then I'll call for vote, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Six zero. This is a reminder. We're going to begin with the nonprofits, putting those up. We have a total of nine million two hundred and fifty thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars in requests. And we have two million five hundred dollars to allocate. So we're diligently to through these, get them to where we would like. It's going to be very difficult. And I guess I ask all the council members that work with each other to be respectful, of course, of each other and of the applicants. As well as a reminder, anybody that may need to recuse themselves from a vote on any of the nonprofits. Please remove yourself into discussion on those particular items as well. Yeah, we just opened the meeting, approved the agenda. Not like anything special. There's any conflict of interest, if you remove yourself from the discussion, then you want to put yourself on the vote. Going back and forth on how to begin this, there's thirty-four requests, right, thirty-four requests on nonprofits. And there's just no good way to do it. So the way we're going to do it is, we're going to do it in the reverse order. There are your council comments and the council members are going to pick an entity to discuss. They're going to make the motion on the dollar figure for the funding. And the council will take a vote on it and deliberate and debate. They want that to go over down and then take the final vote and we'll vote. So we will start with, I don't have the numbers. We'll start with number twenty-four, Lawrence Memorial Home. The request was for two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes, sir. I think the majority of us for the first two, and then now their requests. Can you take them out and give them first two?
If you would like to select one, we can do that.
Five, so we won't have to. All right. Okay.
We're going to jump around, because if we start at the top and get to the bottom, there will be money left. And we start at the bottom and go to the top and get to the top of our case. We're going to go and the council member to advocate for the ones that they feel is important to them. Not that any of them are more important than the others, but we're going to do it that way. And when the money runs out, the money runs out. This Griffin is going to keep up with our tally. And when we need an update on the numbers, we will ask him. So on one of the ones, age, that's the two fifty, is my recommendation that we fund that project in its entirety.
Yes, sir.
I have to disagree.
All right.
I like the memorial home, but the number of residents out there is twenty-eight. And I know they are all seniors and we do need to help them. But this should be, it is a business, even though it's also a nonprofit. And it delivers services and it receives funds from the state and the federal to operate. And I feel like we've addressed Memorial Home for several years. And it always been some issue regarding management and management skills. And just like any other home for the age, NHC Presbyterian Home. I'm trying to name them all. All of them are based on what the individual is able to pay based on the social security or whatever they have. And but I just feel like it's, I would like to see us give them something to help them to, with the equipment or some programmatic things, but not to fully fund this. Because all this fund is a one-time gift. And I think it needs to hit as many people as we can, because technically that's what it's for. It's for the service of people. And I just really feel like two hundred and fifty thousand is just a little too much.
All right.
I had a hundred thousand there. I think another person had another little less than that, but I, and a last person has another less than that. So I think there's three people here who don't believe in fully funding it. And I think we need to come to an agreement on how much we want to allocate.
All right. Anybody else have any comments on that one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is one of the applications that I was watching very closely. And I'm a big proponent for, after going to the facilities, I've been there several times in the past couple of months. The application that they submitted is very focused on updating, making it a better place for the citizens, for the residents to live in. And if you've been there, you'll see how badly that they do need some funding. So I also put two hundred and fifty requested that we fund them fully. So I approve the requested amount.
I have to, yeah. Sure. I'm going to vote to fund it fully. That, I don't think, Chris, you can operate effectively only Medicare funds. And that's basically where they are with this. And I just think that it's survival type actions and it's not adequate. That it occurred very badly by the inability to take in new clients during the pandemic. And so they weren't able to run at the optimum census. And because of, and then they were successful with that strategy in terms of perfection. I am going to vote to fund it fully and, and say, continue to keep things moving. Would be appropriate call of question, what's going on? Can do that, but we never have a professional second, so I will remake my motion to fund Lawrence County Memorial Home of two hundred and fifty thousand. Second, by Lou. All questions, all is in favor of two hundred and fifty thousand for Lawrence County Memorial? Please raise your right hand. All those opposed? All right, motion.
Don't take it personal.
Mr. Carroll, who is next up on the list?
So I'll go with another one that I think is, for me, is going to be pretty straightforward and easy. Lakeland's YMCA Lawrence. The project is something that's going to be beneficial to all residents of the county. And it's for a need of a child care need. And it will be something that would be foundational for the children as they learn. But knowing that we only have so much in the ask was one point nine seven billion. I would guess five hundred thousand dollars.
All right. Yes, definitely. Five hundred thousand for Lakeland YMCA. Is there any comments on that one from other council members?
If you have one, five hundred thousand, are we going to get seven, five hundred thousand?
I'm only responsible for the one.
Well, someone wise.
I get one choice. If it gets back around to me, I'll.
Discuss, I'm going to get there, but I would agree with you right there. Somebody make a motion. All right. Mr. Carroll, there seems not to be much discussion. We'd like to make a one motion for the latter.
Make a motion that we fund Lakeland YMCA Lawrence in the amount of five hundred thousand.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? Call of question. All those who in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed?
I must. They either value the cost of that fund, unless you give something to say.
All right. All right, no problems. That passes five to one to one. Five hundred thousand. All right, next up, Ms. Anderson.
I like to pick, I like to select two of the first two on our list, Straight Street Youth Center. I think it's three of them. You know, I'm trying to do three.
Let's take one at a time, because I might have conflict with a lot of the multiples of change.
All of them, well, really, all three of them, all of them get the same amount. That's why I want to get three, all three of them out of this way. All three of them get the same amount, and maybe everybody went for the same amount.
All right, I will make one exception for multiple things. That is this one. After now, there will be no more exceptions.
Maybe this is a consequence of my A D.
All right, so give a short reminder.
Okay, there's three of them there, Straight Street Youth Center, Good Shepherd Clinic, Medical Clinic. And, what is it, the trails? Oh, the trail, Lawrence County Trail Association. Straight Street is working with some of the youth in the Lawrence area. And I feel like we need to support the youth. The Good Shepherd Medical Clinic, they give to people who cannot afford their prescriptions. And it's an asset to a lot of people in this county when the poverty level that go and can't buy your prescription. And they serve this area very well. And just going along with the website for the Trail Association. And each one of the amounts was minimum. One was fourteen thousand and sixty dollars. The other one was sixteen thousand, and the other one was sixteen thousand. And so I would like to see those in those, given the amount that they request.
All right. Is that in motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion for straight free of fourteen thousand, sixty dollars. Lawrence County Trail Association first project at sixteen thousand. And Good Shepherd Free Medical Clinic at sixteen thousand. Is there any comments, questions, ready, ready, council? Just, all right, here none. I'll call for the vote on for those first three items in the map requested. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed? I will abstain due to conflict of interest for one of those projects, which I'll turn up to the court. But that may capacity six to one. All right, next up is Mr. Youngs.
Oh. I like, let me see, Fountain Inn, there was a question, one and a half million. I wrote down to the part, I saw the plan with a lot of new subdivisions going around this area they're talking about. Like, Mr. Baywell said, thirty percent of family is for Lawrence County. And I'd like to say, I know we can't give it all, but I'd like to. I'd like to see, I'd like to pump it up for his, for his suggestion.
All right. Comments from other council members on the City Fountain Inn request. The request they submitted in progress in entirety, the entire project, Mr. Bell, feel free to scream out if I say this incorrectly. The entire project's in that one point five million dollar range. And there are multiple other funding sources, including fifty-three thousand roughly. This already coming from the county through the capital project sales tax. That will be going towards that project there for that particular farm. So the entirety of this project is one point five, and they're looking at multiple sources of funding to include the City Fountain Inn, Lawrence County C P S T, and they're asking for a chunk here as well.
I also noticed that they had already received some funds from Gringle County. That's appropriate for that.
Have you got money on that project from Gringle County, Mr. Bell?
Gringle County won't fund anything for this project, because it's hard to locate the Lawrence County.
You have to see funding for Gringle County, not for this project.
Correct. Okay, but it was for parks and recreation. Was it a park and recreation what you received at all?
We have an intergovernmental agreement, we receive some revenue from Gringle County and have been for years for recreational purposes.
And you use an portion of what you receive from Gringle Mother Recreation? Are you using a portion of that?
I think our grant, the budget alone is over a million dollars, so I will say that grant funded is fifty grand.
What would you think of Gringle County isn't going to be used in Lawrence County? Which is, this party, the request is for a park, is physically located within our county, a hundred percent.
I would like to say, and this is not any way directed towards Fountain Inn. I would say this for every single municipality that is asking for funds tonight. You know, the two point five that would be allocated is, was designed to go towards our nonprofits. And since the different municipalities in the county already received their own pot of ARPA funds, I would like to see us keep this strictly to nonprofits.
For you to camp out, I want to give something to you. Whatever, make a, you want to make a motion? Yes.
Well, we can do, um. I make a motion that we grant to Fountain Inn for, we have a plan for a hundred thousand dollars.
A motion for a hundred thousand towards the City Fountain Inn for the park.
You should go down to fifty thousand. Would you say fifty thousand?
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand. Oh, we lost that.
I do, so, so I'll tell you, my, I recommend a fifty to vote. We already had another fifty, we've added to that hundred thousand. I knew I had a hundred thousand number, but that was kind of in my head, fifty, there already getting cost another fifty, put it at a hundred. Is that acceptable? Hundred. They're already getting fifty-three now. They want to do another C P S T fund. Fifty from this one will put in a hundred thousand. All right. All right.
I'll second the motion.
And seventy-five.
Yes, sir.
You have a motion of second about thousands, yes. Second from Ms. Anderson, seventy-five. Is there any further discussion? All right, we will take a vote. Seventy-five thousand for Fountain Inn project, all in favor, please raise your right hand. As is for. All right. Next up is. Chairman, it's my pleasure to represent the YMCA and move for approval of five hundred thousand dollars. All right, we have a motion for five hundred for Clint YMCA and a second on the Sanders. Are there any questions or suggestions on this? Add a project that appreciate requests, believing just like was mentioned with the Lakeland's Wives. This project and funding will serve thousands of residents in this county. And this is a solid ask. Is there any further questions, comments, or concerns? If you're not, I'll call for the vote for half a million towards Clint YMCA. All in favor for seven zero. All right.
Thank you, Chairman. There are so many great nonprofits in Lawrence County, and I don't think, goes without saying, that each one of them has made incredible impacts on our communities. And it makes it tough, makes it tough doing this. But there is one nonprofit and one specific group that I believe has gone above and beyond almost any other organization I've ever seen locally, and that is the American Legion Post twenty-five. Jim Peterson here and Kevin Farnsworth are here tonight. They want a building that they can call their home for them to, to do their meetings in and for them to make an even greater impact on our community. Great veterans, great people. And they have submitted a request for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go towards that building fund. I'd like to make a recommendation, we fully fund that request.
A recommendation, Mr. Rankin, on two hundred and fifty thousand towards American Legion Building Fund. Second, I'll second by Mr. Carroll. Any discussion from the council?
Yes, sir.
All right.
This is a building, I remind veterans, but in all of my dealings with the American Legion Post, the BFW, and all other veterans, building initiated through the federal government and through the state. And this is a building. And I really don't feel like we need to be spending money that was supposed to help people or building or facility. We need to touch people's lives. And that's what I think we need to be about, touching lives to make it better. Lawrence County is a very poor county. Oh, we're getting rich now with all the industry that's moving in. But the majority of our citizens just moving up from some poverty levels. And I really feel like we need to be helping those people to improve their quality of life and that their life become better than what it is right now. And I don't think a building can help a person's life. It can only house an individual, but it would not house people who are without housing and people who are homeless and people. This would just be a facility for the veterans. And I feel like the veterans are do a lot, because they have done a lot for the county and the world. And they're doing something right now together. They always have here. But I just can't see us, you know, promoting a facility of that sort with that kind of money from the county when we have other people in the county that's in need here.
All right, thank you, Ms. Anderson. Councilmember, just chairman, I can't fund other priorities with that level of funding for that project. As far as, I will say this, as far as the touching life, I would argue, at least in the Lawrence community, I know they work within other areas of the county as well. They touch many lives. I think having a facility for American Legion twenty-five would allow them to touch more lives, for projects to do more in an house fundraiser. They could have more meetings for C P S T veterans than they do, so they do it a lot for our community. I do have one question for Ms. Peterson, if she's willing to answer it. At whatever level of funding the county sends towards American Legion this evening, one of my desires honestly is that we add a countywide veterans facility that would accommodate all veterans groups in the county and community in its whole. We, whatever allocation we were able to do this evening, if we go down that path of a county veterans facility, would you be willing to invest that money back into that facility to make it a better place and use that facility as your home?
I think all the veterans, you know, we're all veterans, so we're all fighting for the same reason. So like, go off with anybody who's our home.
I think all the veterans, you know, uh, we're all veterans, so we're all fighting for the same reason, so like, go off with anybody who's our home. All veterans, we have. As far as a joint, being a joint, uh, building for all the veterans associations, there are several different, uh, associations with, uh, there for different reasons, for them reaching out to different, different groups, the BFW, the VAB, uh, the, the American Legion, uh, all take a different approach to it, and, uh, all welcome at the American Legion, all eligible for the, for the American Legion, as far as a building to, to house all of them jointly, as, as a group, uh, no, it's an American Legion operation, Americans, we both toward the American Legion, but it's for all veterans. Putting all of the, uh, the BFW folks that want to be involved with the American Legion, and they are all eligible to do that.
All right, but they do have different missions, if I'm not mistaken, uh, in the, um, the American Legion, that's the disabled veterans, the BFW is for veteran of hard work, all these different, even though you are veterans, you, all these different groups have different missions, and we've had, um, American Legion hut in Clinton, and they closed theirs and sold the building to the city. And I know we don't have one here now, but we have two BFW posts here in Lawrence County that I know of that I can look at, and that's one, um, here in Lawrence, and it's one in Clinton. And I'm looking at, I see so many things that, uh, I just cannot, I can't explain, but it would take all night to really get to it. And I've already talked too long, but I, I just, I just, if you don't have the land to put it on, you have to get the land. You got a lot of things to accommodate here that you ask for a building that they would have to get some land and stuff, a man way else to do it.
I'd like to comment just on the, the organization itself, the American Legion was founded nineteen nineteen, it's for all veterans, anybody who has served in the military in any capacity, on a list charge, it's, it's eligible for, for membership in the, in the American Legion. BFW, you have to have been a part of it, they go off, this, you have to have served in a declared war of, or, 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 sorry. Uh, the, uh, the DAB is for those who are wounded, and they, uh, they weren't particularly, weren't there for that. Different organizations all, all for veterans, we include them all. The, as far as touching lives, uh, the, uh, we reach out to all, all veterans and all the people in the community, just like we've done. Well, five, six years ago, we endeavored to, to be a force for good in the Lawrence community, in the city of Lawrence and the county of Lawrence. And we've worked hard to do that, and that facility gives us more of an opportunity to, to do that.
Excuse me, but you don't have the land to put this facility on, correct?
We, we do not.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I'm saying.
I think you made your point, actually, as, I, I, I think that, um, like I said, I think there's an opportunity, I know they've been looking, they, they've talked to us, they've talked to the city, and uh, there's several of us looking for opportunities for them.
And I think there, I think there's an opportunity out there.
Absolutely.
And, um, I'm working with you guys to find that opportunity.
It's also hard, until you have the money for building, there's not a huge sense of talking about the land either, it's kind of all a, that chicken and egg thing, but anyways. So we have a motion and a second on the table, is, is that motion ready to go to the vote, Mr. Rankin?
If we can get a consensus around the amount, then how much people are taking to vote?
Steal this paper before you.
Yes. I, I recommended a full, um, allotment to them for two hundred and fifty thousand. I know there was some concern from Mr. Trivel on the amount, so I want to make sure we're, we're okay before we go to vote.
Oh, plenty.
Take two hundred.
Over forty-two.
Thank, thank you.
I love you, Mr. Trivel. I think I can make a change.
Right. I'll recommend it for two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand, Mr. Rankin, for American Legion. And a second for Mr. Carroll. Uh, we've got plenty of discussion, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Six to one. All right, Ms. Clark.
I apologize for being in relation to, uh, seeing that for mercy, take more, I apologize.
Chairman, point order?
Yes, sir.
Why don't we go backwards down the line, give her two choices, let's go backwards.
Let me go back.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Ms. Clark.
Thank you so much.
All right, we'll do one at a time, if you, if you pick one, then we'll go to, to you, one more.
Beyond Abuse. It's my first one. They request for forty thousand, and I would love to give them their forty thousand. And, um,
All right, so we have a recommendation of forty thousand on, uh, Beyond Abuse. And we have discussion and call for a motion after the discussion, there is discussion from anyone on the Beyond Abuse request.
That's for rent, I cannot see money going for rent, they offer a good service. But the, for what they're asking the money for is for rent.
I would, I, in a kind of degree with the same, as I said, they do start about the, um, what, what happened with these funds, it's fine.
They can have the foundation, they're gonna be embedded some town away. I'm willing, I'm willing to go with, uh, twenty thousand. I'm willing to accept that.
And the council members. I will agree with Ms. Anderson on that. Now, I would, I would love, and I mentioned it last time, I'd love for any community in the train, because we all touch a lot of people and see a lot of things. If you have a lead for them on a better rental area, I would beg you to reach out to them and, and work with them and try to make that better, uh, for them, so they don't find themselves here once again. So I heard an agreement from this card, would you like to make a official motion on funding Beyond Abuse?
I hope to fund twenty thousand to, uh, Beyond Abuse.
All right, a motion for twenty thousand, Beyond Abuse, Ms. Clark, second by Ms. Anderson. Here, in, in further discussion, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? That's a six to one, twenty thousand. All right, what's next, Ms. Clark?
Lawrence County Safe Home. I have served on that board, and I do shop at they shop as well, and I have seen in their facility as well with meetings and events that come in, so that's a good one. I'm not willing to make the, or, 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 say, except for the two hundred thousand. At least a hundred thousand, and for what, that as well.
Recommendation is a hundred thousand for Lawrence County Safe Home. All right, questions, I don't have a discussion, hold back, any council?
That's another facility. I think I found my movement. Lawrence Safe Home.
Chairman, there's some calls, there's seconded that. We're, we're, we're discussing, we'll call for an official motion. So, I, I, I have a line, I have this one fifty, I, I, I can sell it for one hundred. Um, you know, I worked very closely with you, you know, months, years, and have vetted that, that organization, we're convinced that the money that they have is going directly to the purpose, it's represented, so, um, and I want to say expand the facility, uh, to almost double in size, if I'm not mistaken. Triple, wow, congratulations, that would be phenomenal. Um, and I believe too, that was, the ask was just a portion of the entire project, uh, but I was being fine to agree with the numbers that are being mentioned so far. Are there any other discussion? Um, is there any other discussions, questions, or comments, um, I suppose, Paul can make an official motion.
Um, I make the motion.
Go ahead. Sorry, I, I thought, I thought David said something, did y'all agree on something?
A hundred thousand.
Okay.
So, um, the motion is, um, to fund Lawrence County Safe Home, a hundred thousand.
Second. Ms. Clark, a second, uh, to Carroll. We will now take a vote, all those in favor, a hundred thousand for Safe Home, please raise your right hand. Opposed, when it passes six to one. All right, um, Rankin, you're back up again.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, I would like to make a recommendation for us to, um, fund one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Thornwall. They are one of my favorite organizations here in Lawrence County, and I think makes an incredible impact on our county, so I'll make a recommendation for one hundred and fifty to help offset some of the losses incurred by.
All right, we heard the recommendation by Mr. Rankin. Are there any special questions, comments?
That's right, suggested by, by, it's, I'll be one second.
I have a question in relation to, um, programs. I think they have a list, uh, Okay, um, they said access to service. Is all this, all the money requested is going into, uh, programs for Thornwall?
Um, yes, we can, uh, restrict everything, the programs that sort of, on Lawrence, on residents, understanding that we have a larger base that we draw from across the states, and it's sort of talks about this, uh, childhood foster care services, um, during educational services. So we directly you have to just set the programs, and I want to make sure that access to programs has none.
And you said a hundred thousand or something?
One fifty.
One fifty.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And then the bar, the bar is passable, all right. Is there any other questions, comments, or concerns? Uh, I'll take an official motion, Mr. Rankin.
Recommendation to make a wish, to, um, for one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Thornwall.
Motion by Mr. Rankin, and a second by Mr. Carroll, a hundred and fifty thousand. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? All right, uh, and I will abstain due to collective interest, so that will pass six, zero, two, one. Mr. Chairman, I, I'm gonna, um, I, I've got, uh, see, uh, we're gonna.
If you say you understand, did I, I got you.
We're going back up the ladder, we went down the ladder and now we're going back up.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Trivel. I want to put, uh, sixty thousand out there for President Chairman College, I, I don't know that, I don't know that I can properly express you know, the importance of President Chairman College to our county community, you know, that, that, um, sometimes I think of this third leg, what third leg is, I don't know what the other two legs are. And, um, that, that, that college is extremely important in terms of being able to serve, uh, our, our people who are going to be looking at broadband, uh, circumstance coming up, but, uh, Jerry, we've been talking today on the phone about the role that pharmacy school plays in our health delivery system. Diane was talking earlier about the, uh, diabetes program that Good Shepherd has, but Good Shepherd's diabetes program is really the program of President Chairman College School Parts. And so, um, I've got sixty thousand dollars in my list for President Chairman College out of this project, and I, I'd like to, uh, put that out for discussion, if that's the proper word, Chairman. All right, we have a, a discussion, sixty thousand for President Chairman College.
I would second the motion, only because everything that they request there, uh, it has something to do with, um, broadband and completing some of the things that they want to be able to do with the PP funds that they already have, they didn't get enough, uh, to provide for all of the issue that everybody had to do, and, and so I can go along with that.
Mr. Chairman, it's not too much to ask, could we get updated to where we are with the allocation?
One million eight hundred forty-one thousand sixty dollars, I've got that out there.
Has been out there, thank you. One eight four one zero six.
The, the, the motion, Ms. Chairman, has to work, all right, we have a motion from Mr. Trivel for sixty thousand dollars for President Chairman College. Next, second by Ms. Anderson. Take a vote, all those in favor of sixty thousand for President Chairman College, please raise your right hand. I suppose, I will abstain due to collective interest. So that has a six to zero to one, sixty thousand dollars. All right, next up is Mr. Youngs. Yes, sir.
Two, three, two, one. Bail Federation Center for the Blind. Oh, not. I guess this is a thought brought in my heart, the idea of a kid or adult going blind. Just over ten, the calendar's done, I have enough money to go to the eye doctor, it just doesn't sit well. Never had for time. If we can go with the non.
All right, recommendation for Mr. Youngs is nine thousand for the Bail Federation for the blind. Is there any questions, comments, discussion?
I would prefer to see that number closer to thirty thousand, uh, based on the financials that you're receiving on their application. Um, I think ninety thousand is going to be a good, a bit more than what they usually operate on every year. So I'd be more comfortable standing at number thirty.
I agree with, uh, in that the request was for a three-year period of time, it was not, you know, so that's, I think you just, you didn't stop it to work right now, so I think that would help. So I'll go along with the thirty thousand. Compromised.
Yeah, the council member have, um, have questions? I'd like to push for it.
I'd like to focus the thirty eight, so.
Councilman Youngs, I'd like to make an official note.
Like my motion, we're giving four. This is my full plan.
That's their desire. I'll, I'll support it for him, yes. Sir, I'll support it for it. That motion?
Four thousand dollars, Bail Federation for a grant.
All right, yeah, most of forty thousand. I'll say that. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed?
I don't know what you're doing, but I, I thought we had, I thought we had a consensus here before you.
We did, it's, just like you, you all, you're like.
Yes, sir.
You are up next.
I'm going with, uh, prison to gap.
All right, we have prison to gap, that's a lot of work.
Uh, they requested ninety-eight, but, um, I just only see, uh, fifty thousand dollars. I think that would help them not a whole lot, they, you can do everything with the, the youth of the community, and I think, um, the, the programs that they had outlined, that, that would, um, help out a lot, I know they're looking at some uh, maintenance issues, but I'm looking at the program that's I want to, I, I just got to be touching people, not.
This is the whole, all right, we're, 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 all right, we're prison to gap.
Prison to gap.
Ms. Anderson recommended that we consider fifty thousand. Ms. Anderson recommended that we consider fifty thousand.
I'd be, um, support, um, support working together as well with fifty thousand.
Kind of similar to my, um, approach to be the last one. We just approved, uh, the financials from their organization. I don't think with quite qualified for that amount, I'd have them closer to twenty.
I think they were, they were reaching out a little bit more, and that's one reason why I, I couldn't go as much, but I think fifty thousand would help them out a lot. A lot, helping some.
I believe some of the asks, if I remember, they wanted to do raised beds for the children and things. They needed roof repair, but they were wanting to buy a tractor and things like that. I think it was more than what they needed for the scope of the ass and the thing they should do, the impact of the children for the twenty thousand dollar level and just not get all that capital they would look for, because I don't think it's really necessary. I looked at from a worldview, I don't see where they would have enough property to need that much infrastructure things. So that's the reason I was.
Oh, okay. Oh, I, I do agree with Ms. Anderson on the, uh, money going towards, um, programming versus, uh, buildings per se. I do like the request on the handicap accessibility request. I think that's important to allow you to be able to serve broader range of children. Um, I think accessibility is an issue in a lot of areas in our county. However, I'm going to start with several of the other councilors, a lower figure.
Reason to yes. That program, uh, fifty thousand.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Anderson and a second by Ms. Clark at two thousand prison again. All, all those in favor, please raise your right. All right, that bill, we have a motion for twenty thousand from Mr. Trump, second by Mr. Carroll. All those in favor of twenty thousand dollars for prison to gap, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Stenches. All right, so that passes at twenty thousand, uh, six zero. All right, next, uh, Carroll.
I'm gonna post upon the Lawrence County Museum at a hundred thousand dollars. Second.
We have a recommendation for Lawrence County Museum, a hundred thousand. I have an agreement with Mr. Ryan. All right, discussion on that one.
I'm looking at the program. Anyone here? Okay, um, Mr. Allen.
Yes, a good portion of this is going to be going for program. Uh, for COVID kit, we had, um, history day camps for young people. Uh, we're working on, we have a story to tell, which is an old history program. Uh, we have restarted a cemetery archaeology program. We've had intern students from Lawrence High School and Southern High School working over there. So it is programming that's going to sustain us.
I, I want to support the, uh, the museum. One brings an attraction to our community, uh, for outsiders, but also I'm excited about the educational piece that you're doing with schools uh, within the county. I look forward to more and more of that. I know you work on a special study institute, um, project. Uh, that's a big deal. Your career, you're doing a phenomenal job. Um, and I would forward seeing more of that, like the education on the programming, I think is very vital, uh, to ensuring that that's what is important. Questions, comments? No, I'm going to make an official motion.
Well, officially make a motion, if Lawrence County Museum, one hundred thousand dollars. My second motion.
Motion by Mr. Ryan. About Lawrence County Museum. All those in favor, please raise your right. All standing. All right, next, um, I want us to consider the ask from the AI over at Cherokee Nation. They requested, uh, fifty thousand, uh, towards their project. Recommend that we consider the entire ask. Uh, open to discussion from other councilors.
I agree with the fifty thousand. I second the motion.
Any other discussion before I make my motion?
I agree with it.
All right, I'll make a motion that we do the AI over at Cherokee Nation for fifty thousand. Second by Mrs. Anderson. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Seven zero. All right, before we go to the next round, we're, we're at round three. I'm going to ask, we're an updated yes. Got that sixty. All right, so that leaves us with, uh.
What, what'd you say?
Eighty one. What do you have?
Balance.
I got it. Which number did you?
That's mine.
Thirty one.
Add another. Give me the turn number again. Let's run down, let's make sure everybody wants to. All right, I'll get straight traded, forty thousand, sixty dollars. Uh, Martin Trail sixteen, Good Shepherd sixteen. Twenty. Jerry, uh, fifty. All right.
If you're grounded on that point.
Prison gap twenty. President Chair at sixty. Safe Home at a hundred. Uh, one fifty. Actually, two hundred. Uh, two fifty. And I want hundred. Obviously, a bunch of spot on. Yes. Late one. How was for balance? All right, Mr. Chairman, are we going back down? All right. Give me a minute. So this is three hundred eighty eight thousand. Everybody got that number? Balance created. All right, next, I'd like to consider the Lawrence Rotary Club. They have an ask of seventy five thousand. However, I would like to consider us funding. Who's here for Lawrence Rotary? Mr. Dane. I would, I would like to recommend six thousand. Would that help kickstart your literacy program?
Anything will go.
Um, I know, yes, I know it's a new program they're trying to start, but that's not feasible. I would, uh, move next to recommend six thousand for the backpack program. That's also a much needed program. Which would you prefer?
Literacy.
Okay, so my recommendation is that we go six thousand dollars towards the initiation of the literacy program.
I'll second that.
I'll take their, uh, discussion with council members, consideration of thoughts. All right, I'll make an official motion that we go, uh, six thousand dollars Lawrence Rotary Club towards the foundation of their literacy program. Second by Mrs. Anderson. All those in favor, please raise your right. Seven zero. All right. Here.
I had awfully looked at every single one of them and, and broke it out so that I would give something to everybody. We've made a few concessions here and there, but, um, I would like to fund the dental share network of Lawrence County as, for funded at sixty thousand.
Second.
All right, uh, we best say, uh, asking of all of us, is there any other, uh, questions, comments? I'll take that on a motion, Mr. Carroll, second by Mrs. Anderson. And I'll, I'll be booked. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Seven zero. I appreciate those that are here for the dental network and all that you do. All right, uh, Ms. Anderson.
Uh, United Industry Plant. Fifty thousand. What I'd like to request of them.
We'll second that.
Yes, sir.
Yes, you want a, a chair in the all to be, you know, that they've got a grant to cover some overheads, so that's special management there, but every dollar that goes into there is going to be paying somebody's utility bill, somebody's grocery bill. It's going to be directly helping somebody who needs it. They have people on staff that I know personally, there are volunteers that are skilled at being able to determine their ability to pay and, and that kind of thing, and, and this is good stuff.
I would like to do more, but they're inching up to the last amount of money that we have. So I feel like that next weekend, I'll give them at least fifty thousand. I would like to give more. I know they do, and also United, I think, helps them out. People who don't have money, they need help. That they have been trying to have a high.
Recommendations, or any other recommendations or comments from other councilors?
Want to go up a little? It's true.
I, I, I'm on your, I follow you. I double that a little bit, but, uh, I'd love to see at least half of the ask. I'm working that. That was seven thousand. Yeah, I mean, I, I'm going to vote for the highest amount anybody will be at.
I'm there on fire for weeks. I may, I move that we give seventy five thousand to the United Industry Plant.
Second. By Ms. Anderson, second by Ms. Clark. All those in favor of seventy five thousand to the United Industry Plant, please raise your right hand. Seven zero. All right, uh, before we get, Youngs, can you give us a, a big figure? I've got it after this end. I'm sorry, I should have clarified that. We're about to two hundred and forty eight thou. All right, two hundred and forty eight, the board is left, Mr. Youngs.
Camden Ministers of Carolina has asked for a hundred. I will know my progressions throughout the year. If you need, you know, outside, I'm all right, but I like to try and get in for a battle. They've asked for a hundred.
All right, um, all right, I request, uh, I think that that project is going to be great for Lawrence County, and I would see that with our parts, rest part of uh, with our Orange Department. Uh, on that project, let's see what all we come up with. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Mr. Chairman, as you know, you and I have talked with Kevin about this, and that, um, this has got some real potential for us, and that, that whether this is the right way to fund the amount or not, um, it is an open discussion. But we need to have a discussion, you know, about that property and about, you know, how we access it and so forth. So I'm going to go with the forty thousand for today, but I'd like to have lunch with government and especially, uh, more in depth relationship.
If you're buying, I'll be there. All right, Mr. Youngs, you'd like to make an official motion for that.
I can make, make a motion for forty thousand dollars to Camden Ministers of Carolina.
All right. And we're from Mr. Youngs, second by Ms. Clark. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
I would like to see those partnerships that you have.
Thousand, I'm sorry, two hundred thousand eight dollars. Over your. Okay, just one second.
I know.
No. I'm going to go Lawrence County Trail. I'm, I'm fully, uh, I'm going to go, uh, West seventy, I'm going to propose. I'll say that.
I think we have, I that trail, I, I, I want to give them something, even though I can't get it on my paper, but I don't, I don't mind, but I just think that's should be covered in another way.
We'll cover it that way, too.
Okay.
I can give them a second to that. I like where it goes to.
I'll be second, like.
Fifty thousand, and I'll, I'll, I'll put that on a motion. On a motion, fifty thousand for the second, uh, allocation on the, on that trail association. Second by Mr. Ryan. I'll vote all those in favor of fifty thousand dollars, please raise your right hand. All those opposed?
I'm staying.
Six zero one. All right, next up is Mr. Ryan.
Yeah, thanks, Chairman, um, forgive me if I missed this. Did we already approve family profits? Okay, yeah, I thought that was still open.
Family profits? Did we approve that?
That we have.
I would like to, uh, make a recommendation that we, um, fully fund there. fully fund their forty-five thousand dollars request.
All right. Recommendation, I think it's special move to board of all. This is a very needed program in our community. Um, homelessness is a problem everywhere. Uh, we're just unfortunately seeing one more of it here in Lawrence. And especially with families, I don't think focused directly with families, uh, with children unless they have them. I'll support the recommendation of this.
I just, I like the work, I like the mission of the organizations. And, uh, but I know you just knew because we're just around about two years. Just, and then after the pandemic and all that, so, uh, I know you probably need strengthening that. I, I like the way you do collaborate with other entities. So keep on working on, of course. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
The amount of proposed was chairman forty-five.
All right, trying to go down a hallway.
Yes. I make a motion to fully fund the pressure family promise for forty-five thousand dollars.
I'll say that motion. I'll favorably raise your right hand. Seven zero. All right, Miss Clark. All right, let's get big real fast. One thirteen, one, we have.
One thirteen.
Thirteen, where we are.
One thirteen?
Yes.
Can I help you out a little bit?
I gave you three on the first round.
I always know. You have to ask. Don't ask.
Always knows what you ask.
Uh, my focus would be, let's try to fund Lawrence County Members of Commerce. For fifty thousand.
I say. Recommendation is for Lawrence County Chamber of Commerce at fifty thousand.
I like what they're doing, especially like the, uh, the components of the application that focus on our small businesses.
We'll see. Um, I will vote against that one this time. The chamber does phenomenal work for our community. The chamber, uh, does great for business. I personally remember the chamber, um, they do, wherever it is. Please do not take my opposition personally by any interest imagination. I know what we've worked out to do. However, there are other items that are still left on the list that if I had a choice, I would send that correction. So that's my reason for my opposition. Um, anybody else?
I have allocated my thoughts, twenty-five thousand for small business grants. Uh, but the whole amount wasn't deserving, but targeted to those small business grants. Uh, like to get the others, that's why.
Give what about Main Street too? And, you know, that's a, that's a.
Nowards for that as well.
And that one is going to help, uh, businesses. And with the startup, and I wanted to give them a little something.
Yeah, I was going to say twenty-five towards, uh, is it, let me, let me start before I say that. As far as your election, you do what you want to do. But I am, I would request that we consider twenty-five towards Main Street and twenty-five towards the chamber. I could get on board with that.
I'd rather receive if we give both of them fifty thousand. That's my, you can give both of them fifty.
I would, I can figure that out.
If you down count now, it's down. I don't know.
We're building a, since it's around the body and. Motion from Miss Clark, go twenty-five towards the chamber and twenty-five towards Main Street. Second by Miss Anderson. I'll vote all those in favor, did raise your right? All those favors are seven zero. All right. We're in the end of another road. We definitely put us at, uh, somebody, our number, but should be sixteen. So how, how much do you give for that? Where you are. Of course, the elements do not change. That balance of two and a half million. Thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. Could be showing what I would like to. Two on here, it's not. There are two on here that I would like council to discuss. Um, one is the United Way and the other is the Carolina Empowerment Center. Uh, and I know they work together at some level. The United Way does help fund the Empowerment Center. The, uh, I was at forty-eight there.
We others like to them, um, I know they also help with utilities. But they also, uh, you know, serve other entities within the United Way. But I, I would like for it to be in utilities, uh, something that they give back to the community. Instead of on the, on the bank, it's that they give to.
Okay. Thoughts on that? If we fund you or you will, you promised me that some of the funding will go towards the Empowerment Center. Can you make that?
We already fund the Empowerment Center.
Well, that, I'm aware of that. My question was if we fund you at the, it was called sixty-three thousand dollars. We ensure some of that funds will follow towards the Empowerment Center. Okay. Thank you. All right, I can get on board with your recommendation. So I'll make that motion to, uh, sixty-two thousand nine hundred and forty dollars be allocated to United Way Lawrence County. Second by Miss Anderson. Any further discussion? Here and then I'll call for a vote, all those in favor, did raise your right hand? Oh. That's tension. All right. Six, oh, two one. All right. I want to thank everyone and some of y'all have another session. I want to thank everyone who took the time to apply, um, who, who bared with us at the last meeting to discuss their ask. Uh, this was a monumental, um, task for council. I appreciate my fellow council members for deliberation, uh, for going to do and discussing these projects. Uh, some of you got what you asked for, some of you got what you asked for, some of you didn't do anything. But I want to commend you all for taking the time and the energy of what it took to put through these grants. Um, and encourage all of you on several of your participating services organizations. So I'll say all of us to, to support our fellow nonprofits and our fellow entities that need help. I think there are a lot of people in these groups, uh, who benefit from others. We mentioned a few of those last meetings that we were, uh, delivering through them. Um, but I just thank you all for your patience. It's been a long process. I'm glad this one's quicker than last time. Uh, but this has been a really process. But I do appreciate all of you applying. At this moment, we are going to take a short recess, um, for everyone who needs to leave. Uh, next we'll be discussing the infrastructure grants, uh, who applied. Uh, we'll begin that at seven P M based on the clock. But thank you all again. I will open my. Let's do it. Bring it back to order. All right, look at it, I appreciate y'all, uh, working with us through the nonprofit, we'll move to the next agenda, which is the ARPA Infrastructure Application Review and Allocation. We've had asked from three entities for multiple projects, and council may not discuss those. Chairman, would a motion be in order? I would love to entertain a motion, Mr. Treble.
Thank you.
Let, let me entertain Mr. Treble's motion.
Mr. Treble, I think we can all go home a little bit, so I'm proposing that we fund the Presbyterian College, uh, grant proposal at even six hundred thousand, CPW is even six hundred thousand, one point three million to Orange County Water Sewer to be allocated as this.
All right, motion by Mr. Treble is to allocate the broadband infrastructure at the Presbyterian College at six hundred thousand, uh, the infrastructure request from CPW at six hundred thousand, and the, uh, infrastructure, uh, request combined to Orange County Water Sewer at one point three million. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carroll. Is there any discussion?
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and that one related to, you have, um, the first, uh, application that you had. Um, did you just, did you just receive, uh, a grant for this particular one here through the Office of Management of the Council of Government?
I'm about to protest, uh, the sewer, the gray core, yes, we did an EDA grant for two million.
Okay, so what do you need that to complete that? Uh, neither, doesn't need to come off, I got, I, I just wrote down large, um.
The request you made for that project is for engineering, because EDA is a federal grant, and ARPA is federal funding, um, we're a little bit limited, but that project is a near-term project, I mean, we're about to bid that project first of June, so our request is for the full amount towards engineering. Other dollars for that project are going to come out of some of our reserve funds, uh, utility tax credit dollars, LCT is contributing some money to that project, and the industry is also pretty.
Where the, where the amount of, what, 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 um, grant did you just receive, uh, through Office of Management?
The press release for an EDA grant, that's a span of.
That, okay, that was just a press release, you didn't receive any funds from that?
We did, it was committed to me, we, we actually get reimbursed, um, as the project is constructed up to that amount.
Okay, so if, okay, so if we take this one off of, off the table, that one help you that up?
It's, it's coming out of our pocket, please take it off. Mr. Treble's motion would allow, uh, Mr. Bill and his staff to address the needs as they saw fit, that's good, it wouldn't be necessarily going to, I, I'm the ones that request it, of course, they're not, they can go.
If I can find more money to go towards this project, then the dollars will roll over to my deficit, say, on my metro pro profits, I actually like appreciate the way Councilman Treble presented the motion.
It, it'll all go to the projects that were presented, too, but it will go to. Because their ask was much more than.
That's why I know, that's why I'm trying to get down, so, okay, go ahead.
I, I just, I, I think.
I'd like a couple of questions.
I would call for a question, all those in favor, uh, six hundred thousand for the broadband infrastructure at the Presbyterian College, six hundred thousand to the infrastructure projects, CPW at one point three million for Orange County Water Sewer towards their projects, all favorably raised right? All those opposed? Stenches. I'm staying, due to multiple construction measures, um, the motion passes five, it says zero.
Do we have any of us that go from the, uh, infrastructure for the broadband? But we had set aside, I stood the map on the broadband.
We have, we have discussed, uh, one million toward broadband and two, uh, okay, we have discussed one million broadband and one and a half to, uh, watch for infrastructure, however, when we deliberated in open session, uh, I'm trying to double, open session workshop, when we deliberated in a council meeting, the vote was to combine them all into an act.
I know we've combined, but we still had.
The motion, the motion did not, we, we had no discussion, you are correct.
We had, but we did set aside a certain amount of money for broadband, and I want that money, if it's not used by Presbyterian College, that the remainder of it be given for some other broadband that is happening within the county. Uh, you said we were gonna give a million dollars to broadband, and I want a million dollars on broadband.
Well, we elected to do six hundred thousand on broadband and the balance, so that, uh, was, would have gone towards the CPW and water sewer products.
That does not touch other people who need that county service, and I wanted the service to go out a little farther than that, and I, I don't think we.
I will tell you, like I told another part, uh, community in our county, is that the application process was open to everyone, uh, we even held hands on some of them to apply, and I cannot hold a gun to someone that didn't make them apply for a grant.
I know.
I hate that there are multiple entities on the broadband side that did not apply, some that I think should, um, that are locals.
I agree.
But, once again, I can't make somebody.
But that does not stop, but that does not stop the county from using, having a bond set aside to be used for broadband.
Somebody comes to council with a, a project on the broadband, actually, let's back up a step, if you bring us a project related to broadband, council member brings a project for council, related to broadband, I will gladly entertain it, discuss it, and vote for that.
All right, thank you much.
All right, are there any, little comments up here about, how come we're looking through here?
Motion, Chairman, stay.
Motion by Mr. Ryan, saying, all those favorably raised right hand? All those opposed? Seven, six, the one.
You're the guy get what I did.